So, let's get our work meeting going here and see. Have you all had a chance to look through the agenda? Have any questions on it?
Yes, and there are no questions for me.
Okay, thanks Bryce. When does your son wrestle? Is your son wrestling soon, Bryce?
What's that again? Oh, you know what, he's very last. So, there's a good chance we might be through all of this meeting before I have to mute myself. So, I don't know for sure. I'm sure it's gonna be around 7:30-ish.
Okay.
Maybe quarter to eight, so we could, there's a good chance we could be done, maybe not, but.
We can try.
Yep.
You can hope.
Yes.
Okay, I'm gonna, do I have a volunteer out there that'd be willing to give a reverence at the beginning of our commission meeting?
I'll do it.
Oh, good job.
Thanks Amanda.
There's not enough time for me to say it, because I would, there's too many problems in the world to bless.
Well, I don't know if you want me to say it either, but.
Thanks, Amanda.
You're welcome.
Okay. So, we just have the, we have two items of city business, two conditional use permits. One for an accessory unit for Craig Stegen. Do you have a plant chance to look at any of that? And do you have any, anything that you feel like we need to discuss?
I didn't notice anything concerning, really.
Yeah. I think, I think Shawna, I talked with Shawna earlier today, and she mentioned that she had one person, and she'll read this into the minutes, I'm sure, who either wrote in or emailed in or anyway contacted us. Hello Nathan? And said, concerned about making sure that there was enough off-street parking for these units. And that's something we need to be aware of when we're approving them. As far as I can recall, this is our first, first one since we adopted this ordinance to allow for these accessory dwelling units, ADWs they call them, ADUs. Did I miss the meeting? Did I miss the meeting?
It looked like on the plan that there was, oh, go ahead, sorry.
Go ahead Bryce, sorry.
I was just gonna say concerning the parking, it looked like there was gonna be, I mean, it's just a mother-in-law, there's plenty of parking right in front of the unit.
Right.
It appears, anyway.
And they've, they've, they were, I don't think it's specific to this individual one, but just something we need to be aware of when we're looking at these class of these ADUs. That they are not gonna have to park on the street.
Right.
Just something to keep in mind.
I'm trying to answer your, oh, sorry.
Oh, no, thank you.
I was just gonna answer Mary's question. I don't think we've seen any of these accessory dwelling units come up since that ordinance was put in place. This is the first one.
Yeah, I agree.
I'm kind of excited about it. I think it's good that people are utilizing that.
And, and I'm also excited that we have this, this statement that we're requiring to get their signature on. That they realize it's a minimum and maximum square footage, and that it must be subordinate to the principal dwelling, and it must, the principal dwelling must be owner occupied.
Yeah, that's one thing, you know, I, as I was looking at this, and I know that this isn't in our, I don't think this falls under us necessarily, but maybe it's just a suggestion or something to look at when we're looking at the general plan. But I know there's a lot of people, and my parents fall into this category, that, you know, they've lived out here in Hooper, they can't do a multi-level home anymore because they've gotten older. And so, for them, if they wanted to build a smaller home on their, you know, an accessory dwelling towards the back that was one level, and occupy that, and then maybe rent out the, the front, I'd like to see that be a possibility for some of those residents that fall into that. I guess I was a little confused as to why they require that the primary dwelling is the one that's in, where the person that owns it is living.
The thought behind that, Amanda, was that we wanted to make sure that there was an owner occupant, that it didn't become an absentee landlord type situation where both units were rented out.
Could it be something where as long as one of them is owner occupied, that, that would satisfy that? And still allow for people to have that option?
I like that idea.
It's something to really consider. Yeah, we might maybe do a modification of that ordinance, that either the ADU or the principal residence is owner occupied, because I can see, I can see where that would be a helpful idea.
Yeah, I just think a lot of people would, would, that would give them an option. And where, you know, as we've been doing these surveys and things, and there's a, it seems like there's a good amount of interest in people wanting to stay here through retirement. I think that gives people another option.
Yeah. So, I think what we'll need to do is maybe put a proposal forth to the city council to request a little bit of a modification on, or change the wording on that ordinance, so that it is clearly stated that one of the other, one or the other of the residents must be owner occupied, not necessarily the principal resident. For that very reason.
Do we allow people in Hooper already, if it's just a single-family residence, to rent that home out? Even if they're not living there?
Yes. Yeah, a single, sweet, single rental unit on a single lot is totally acceptable. But now that we're adding these accessory dwelling units, we wanted to make sure that they didn't get away from us and become, you know, out of control where there was nobody there to, to make sure that things were kept up and everything looked good. So, that's the purpose behind that. So, anyway, it looks to me like the Stegans for the accessory dwelling unit, doesn't, I don't have any questions on it.
No.
Anybody else?
There was one thing on the, on the conditional use permit. I think he put the square footage of his home in the description.
That's correct.
Instead of the square footage of the, yeah. So, maybe if he could modify that, that's not a big deal, but.
On the actual, on the actual permit itself, and yes, the, the AD, it says on the square footage for the ADU is 1592, when in actual fact it's only 960. So.
Right, correct.
Shawna, do we need to just amend that on the application? Or change, when I, when you, when you.
Yeah, I mean, you'll want to. Yeah, I think it was just a mistake on his application. I did try to reach out to them prior to the meeting to get clarification, but I didn't really hear a response back either way. And then you can kind of see from the other details that they submitted separately that that really wasn't what their intent, because it's not even, not what it says on like the last two pages for the consideration of the dwelling. So, if you want, I can have him come in and modify that, just so we can clarify. Or what, if you approve this conditional use permit, I also have to create a conditional use certificate. And in that certificate, it will state the same thing, that it's only 960 square feet.
Okay, that works.
Yeah, I have a question on this too, because when I was at the meetings before, my understanding was that was 400 square feet and 960 maximum of dwelling space, right? So, if they wanted to have a garage, they still could, and that could, you know, be another standard garage's four to 500 square feet. That could be in addition to, this one doesn't have the garage on it, but a secondary home could, correct?
Yeah, I'd have to clarify with legal, but my understanding is the, the limitation we have is for dwelling space.
Yeah, this application just doesn't explicitly read that way, so that might be something that we should. I mean, whatever, it's just.
I can talk to legal.
Okay, awesome.
So, if I understand right, Sheldon, your question was about also having a garage attached to a second, ADU, accessory dwelling unit?
Correct, so like if this sign-off thing that I have, if it just said is a minimum of 400 square feet and a maximum of 960 square feet, dwelling square footage or something like that, if it were to say nine, maximum 960 dwelling square feet. Instead of in size, because that would lead someone to think like, oh, maybe I can't have a garage attached to it.
Dwelling. Okay.
You see what I'm saying? Because if I were to read this and not really different, I'd think, oh, now I have to get like a second permit for a separate detached structure, you know what I mean? As a way around it, when that's not what we're asking people to do.
Funny, and just to clarify, they wouldn't be able to get a second conditional use permit, even when it becomes attached in any way, it becomes part of the whole one, and the original one is no longer valid.
Sorry, I didn't mean a secondary condition, because I'm just saying like a separate structure, you know? Like the second one here that we're doing tonight has multiple structures on their lawn, so.
Okay. Well, that's something we might need to address as a planning commission and send it upstream to the city council. And I think this one for tonight, for Stegans, looks pretty good. I don't have any questions on it. What, and then RJ and Stacy Martin, their conditional use permit for oversized structure. Once again, it meets all of the requirements, it looks like to me. Paul Barnes probably have a couple of questions for them, regarding whether it's gonna have a concrete floor and clarify that there's no plumbing or. He said there's no electricity installed for the structure, but I wonder about that. Maybe not.
You might just clarify.
Yeah, it's a pretty big building to not have a light in it. So, so that's something we want to clarify, I think. Okay. I noticed just one thing Shawna, on the minutes. Last time. And it was item number six, the approval of the Wheeler subdivision. In the motion itself, it says, it doesn't read well. It just says with, with the condition that an escrow for curb gutter sidewalk be put in place dot ing of the development.
Oh, sorry.
So, there's either words missing or something's put in there that shouldn't be.
Okay. So, let's think, so I know what the motion, who made the motion, sorry?
I think I made the motion, didn't I?
And I can go back through, I can go back through the audio also. Most likely, I just didn't get it. Some of this is templated, so I probably didn't get, I didn't catch that mistake.
Basically just saying prior to the development, it needs to be put in. I mean, that's basically what we're saying.
Yeah, it's just that it doesn't read, it doesn't read right. With the condition that escrow for curb gutter sidewalk be put in place, something of the development. So, we just clarify that Shawna.
Should I just omit? Would commission like to see me just so, like after place period, just omit that? I'm sure that's just a copy over.
Be put in place? That sounds right to me.
That's fine.
In place for the development, instead of in place of the development, right? Is that?
Just be put in place, period, and leave those other words out.
Okay.
Yeah, it's really up to, yeah, whatever you want, Commissioner Prince to make the motion.
I think that sounds fine, just to put, be put in place. And then you can drop the rest of that.
Okay, I'll go ahead and omit that before they're published.
Okay.
Mary, would it, can we talk just a little bit about how this works with the approval of the chairman and the vice chairman? So, I know, like when Bryce and I came into this last year, we were new and Sheldon's new. And so, how does that work exactly? Do you usually take turns with somebody taking that position? Is it, and maybe just brush, like especially for Sheldon's benefit, what the, what the role of the chair and the vice chair are, so that we know, like, other than like officiating at the meetings and attending the city staff meeting, and then relaying that information to us, is there anything outside of that? Just so we know what we're, what we're doing, because this is still kind of new, that part of that to some of us, so.
Well, and that's why, that's why I wanted to talk about this last. We got like five minutes before meeting starts, but it's just, the commission itself, we need to just nominate a chairman, and then a vice chairman, who is willing to accept the position and be able to be available for staff meetings. Once in a while, you know, I'll have a, a meeting with people over at the office or special meetings that, you know, if a developer comes in and says that they wanna have a meeting with the planning commission chairman. But it doesn't happen often, I think I had two last year. And the vice chairman is there, supposed to be able to step in if I, if the chairman cannot be there. So, it doesn't involve a lot, it involves conducting the meetings and attending the staff meetings on Wednesdays. And that's not mandatory, but it's very helpful.
True.
So.
And is there any, so when you meet with developers and things like that, there's no decision-making? Like the chair doesn't make any decisions? It has to be a consensus of the group still and everything like that?
No, uh-uh. But, you know, sometimes a developer, like I remember one meeting last year, developer came in and just wanted to bounce ideas on something that he had to do with actually commercial property, what he thought, what, he wanted to bounce ideas to see what we, he thought we would maybe be amenable to. So, it was just a matter of listening to his ideas, and then saying, you know, this might fly, this definitely won't fly, you know, those kinds of things. So, we're not making decisions, we're just giving them direction, maybe? Something like that, so.
Okay, is there, is that something you're still willing to do or wanting to do? I have no desire to do it. I don't, I just don't know what anybody else is, if somebody else is wanting to do it. I just don't want it to be awkward when we start the meeting and be like, uh, what are we doing, so?
Yeah, and that's why I wanted to talk to, that's why I wanted to talk about it now, too. If you guys feel like you want me to continue on as chairman, I, I would do it.
Do you want to do it?
I don't think I would show, throw Sheldon in the hot seat yet this year. I'm gonna keep him up for next year.
What about you Nathan? You've been in here a long time, is that something that you?
Uh, you know, I struggle to make the meetings some nights anyways, and even the Wednesday meeting, or would you say, Mary, the Wednesday meeting that they have?
Yeah, they have a Wednesday meeting at 4:30.
Yeah, there's no way, there's no way I could even make those.
With your work.
Right.
Bryce, are you still on?
I'm still here, yes.
Yeah?
You know, if you're, if you have a desire to still fulfill that role, I'm okay with keeping you in there.
Thanks bud.
We don't want to fire you yet.
Well, I don't mind if, if you guys feel like you have the confidence in me and you want me to continue. I don't mind doing it for another year, just be it known that it will be my last year.
Yeah. Hey, there's one, one thing, Mary, and let me get this in just before the meeting starts. There's one thing, and don't take this in a bad way, so don't get mad at me. Like, for an example, when you meet with the Wasatch, Wasatch front people, probably a lot of times you want to voice your own opinion, which is great, which is probably 99% right, but make sure you grab a consensus of all us, what we want to do. I know the timeframe that you discussed with, you told me about today for the, for the general plan. Yeah, it's a long ways out there, but maybe the consensus of everybody else is that's, that's okay. I don't know. Rather than just, you know, going and offering your opinion, just make sure you gather all ours and put it together, and so it's a consensus when we, when we approach Wasatch. That's the only thing I would recommend. But you're doing a great job, and I have total confidence in you to fill that role for this year. But anyway, so don't be mad at me, but that's.
No, thank you.
And maybe that's one, one, one suggestion that, that, that maybe you could implement.
Yeah, and, and I appreciate that, because sometimes I do get a little overzealous, because I want my city, our city.
Sure.
To be good, you know, and so I, I have a reminder that I'm just one person here, I'm not everybody, that's for sure. So, okay, thank you. All right. It's seven o'clock.
So, I'll nominate, do we nominate you now or in the general meeting?
Well, we'll have to do it in just a minute, in the regular meeting.
Okay, all right.
Okay.
Okay.
And Bryce, are you willing to be vice chairman again?
Does, does anybody else have a desire to do it?
I don't.
The Sheldon or Amanda or Nate?
You've done great, Brent.
I think you're both doing great, so.
Okay, I, I'd be willing to do, continue in that role as well.
All right, then we pretty much have the groundwork laid for that. Okay, it's 7:01, we need to start our meeting. I'd like to welcome everybody out to our, it looks like we have about 11 participants in our, in our planning commission meeting. I'd like to welcome everyone who's here listening. And I, I, we've asked Commissioner Prince to give us a reverence. We don't have a flag, so we can't do our pledge of allegiance, but we will participate in reverence. Commissioner Prince?
Our Father in Heaven, we are so very grateful for all of our many blessings. We're grateful for the opportunity to meet together and to discuss the needs of our city, and we're grateful for this country that we live in, for all of the freedoms and blessings that we enjoy. And so very thankful for all who have sacrificed to provide those for us. We're grateful for our health and our strength, and to be alive at a time when we are so prosperous. And only Father, we ask that thou would please help us to always be mindful of others and of the impact of our decisions. Please help us to be in tune with thy spirit, to be guided by wisdom with the decisions that we make during this meeting. We ask that thou would please watch over our country, please bless the leadership of our country, and help them to make righteous decisions, help us to be respectful of others, and please heal the division and the animosity that is so prevalent right now. We ask that thou would please help us to try and improve our area of the world as best we can. We ask that thy spirit will be with us throughout this night, and that when the time comes, we will be able to return home in safety if we are away from home. For those that are home, please watch over our families while we are participating in this meeting. And we say these things in the name of thy beloved Son, Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen.
All right.
All right. Thank you. So, our first item of business on our agenda tonight is the approval of the minutes for the planning commission meeting that was held December 10th. Commissioners, have you had an opportunity to review these minutes?
Yes.
Yes.
And is there any other changes that need to be made?
No.
Just spelling, I mean, where it says Brian Dalton, it says Brain Dalton. I don't know if that even matters, if we point something like that out or not, but nothing that matters of significance.
Oh. But I. Well, I think we want, it's a permanent record, so we want it to look right. So, it looks like there's a spelling issue under Brian Dalton. We want to spell that correctly. And then, under item number six on the motion, we need to remove some of the, there's a few words in there where it says ING of the development needs to be taken out of the motion. Doesn't make sense. Any other changes?
I don't think so.
Okay. Then we would entertain a motion to approve these minutes as modified?
I'll motion that we approve the minutes of December 10th, 2020 as modified.
And a second, please?
I'll second that.
Okay, so we have the motion to approve and seconded by Commissioner Prince. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? None, thank you. Okay, the first item on our city business is the approval of a chairman and vice chairman for 2021 for our planning commission. So, are, we would entertain nominees for the position of chairman.
I'll nominate.
I'll, I'll, go ahead, go ahead Nate.
I'll nominate Mary Simpson as chair.
Are there any other nominations?
I'll second it. So.
Are there any other nominations?
No.
Okay, so we have nomination for Mary Simpson to continue as chair, who was made by Commissioner Platt and seconded by Commissioner Wilcox. All in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Okay, then we have the position of vice chairman for 2021, who would step in and take charge of meetings in the situation where the chairman couldn't attend. So, I would accept nominations for that position.
I will nominate Bryce Wilcox for vice chairman for 2021.
Okay, do we have a second on that?
I'll second that.
Commissioner Prince is seconding that. Are there any other nominations? Seeing none, then I would entertain a motion that, well, I beg, we don't need a motion, I guess we just vote. We have Commissioner Wilcox nominated as vice chair, which was seconded by Commissioner Prince. All those in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Okay, it's like, we'll carry on. The first item on our agenda of city business is a public hearing. It's for a conditional use permit for an accessory dwelling unit for Craig Stegen, for his property located at 6068 West, 5600 South. Is Mr. Stegen available?
Yes, how are you?
Good. Mr. Stegen, do any of the commissioners have questions for Mr. Stegen? Well.
Is there some question about the parking where, just to clarify that, where the people that will be living in the accessory dwelling will park?
So, the driveway will go on the left side of the exist, of west side of the existing home along the property line to the mother-in-law.
On the south side.
To the mother-in-law property north, and it will sit on the south side of the new structure.
It'll just, it'll be open parking in front of the building?
Yeah.
In front of the new building?
Yeah, what it is, it's a 960 square foot home that we're building on our property. And there will be a parking pad in front of the, of the, the new home.
On the south side.
On the south side.
Do you plan that to be asphalt or gravel or paint?
Uh, that'll be, that'll be concrete. As far as the driveway back there, we're not sure. That's just depending on what the city requires, so probably gravel.
Okay. All right. Uh, this is a public hearing, and so this time we will, we will open it up for any public comments regarding this request for the conditional use permit. Is there anyone out here listening that would like to make a comment? Okay, seeing none. Did we receive any public comments in via email or electronic?
I have not received any public comments for this topic.
Okay, thank you. So, any other, if there's no other public comments, we will close that now and return it back to the planning commission. Commissioners, do you have any comments or discussion regarding this conditional use permit for Craig and Carol Stegen? Commissioners, do you have any comments or discussion regarding this conditional use permit for Craig and Carol Stegan?
No, it looks, looks good, I, I motion that we approve the conditional use permit for Craig Stegan sixty sixty-six eight west, fifty-six hundred south, nine hundred and sixty square feet.
Correct.
I second that.
All right, we did want to put a clarification on that conditional use permit, that it is for nine hundred and sixty square foot dwelling. In the application, it says fifteen ninety-two square feet. Mr. Stegan, is that the square footage of your first, of the home that's already there?
The home that was originally built has like seventeen hundred and something square feet and then in ninety, nineteen ninety-eight or ninety-nine, we added about eighteen hundred square foot addition to that, including the garage. So.
The mother-in-law home will only be nine hundred and sixty square feet, yeah, this should be laid out in the plans for that, so.
So I think your conditional use permit, your application is incorrect. You probably need to go back into the office and have Shawna give you a modified application or work it out with Shawna so that it's accurate, okay?
Yeah.
Is that all right with you, Shawna?
Eric, if you guys just want to stop by the office next week, we're closed Monday for the holiday, but Tuesday through Thursday, I can help you here at the front counter.
Okay.
All right, so we had a motion to approve this conditional use permit by Commissioner Platt and it was seconded by, I forgot, Commissioner Greener?
Yes.
Yes, okay, so, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Okay, seeing none, that passes. And Mr. Stegan, congratulations.
Thank you, appreciate it.
You are the first one that we've approved.
Right, thank you.
Okay, the next item, excuse me?
History's made.
History has been made. Perfect, thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next item on our agenda is also a conditional use permit for an oversized structure for Richard and Stacy Martin on their property located at five five thousand south, sixty-three hundred west in Hooker. Is there a representative online for the Martin family?
Yes, RJ Martin.
Okay, welcome. Do you want us to, do you want to give us any further information other than what we see on your application?
Yeah, it's just a storage shed for, for trailers and tools, so.
Okay. On your application, you indicated that there would be no electricity, is that true?
That is correct, yeah, we are not putting electricity in, it's just going to be a storage shed.
Not, not have any lights or anything, huh?
Nope, no, there'll be, there'll be the fiberglass panels on the side to add light, but no power out to it.
Okay. Okay. Okay, anyone else have any questions for Mr. Martin?
Yeah, I was just wondering, do you, do you give yourself enough room like around it to get, be able to drive behind it? Or like what is your plan for accessing the back part of your property?
Yeah, so I've got the ten foot easement on the south side of the, of the building for the easement for the, for the property line. And then there's a twelve foot space between the north side of the building and the corrals, which will extend all the way back through past the riding arena. So I've got a twelve foot alleyway to drive through there. And then behind it, between the back of the barn to my beginning of the riding arena is about fifty feet.
All right. Any other questions for Mr. Martin from the commission? Okay, this is a public meeting and so are there, is there anyone online who would like to make comment regarding this request for conditional use permit? Seeing none or hearing none, we'll close public comment. Commissioners, do you have any other further discussion on this?
It's pretty cut and dry to me.
I think it's a pretty good, pretty clean and, like you said, cut and dry, sounds good. So we can.
I like these things because they, you know, giving people the option to have this, they put their stuff in it, it keeps their stuff safe, keeps it out of the elements and makes the neighborhoods look good, so I like that Hooker allows our residents to do these sort of things.
Yeah, and I agree, you know, when you can, when you can store your things away, it certainly deters crime. And makes, makes all of Hooker better, so I agree with that. So I would entertain a motion to approve this conditional use permit for the oversized structure for Richard and Stacy Martin.
I'll motion that we approve the conditional use permit for Richard Martin at five thousand south, sixty-three hundred west.
Hey, we have a motion from Commissioner Prince, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, and a second from Commissioner Greener? So all those in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Okay, seeing none, then this, this application for conditional use has passed. Okay. That is the end of our city business for tonight, is there anyone who would like to bring up any new public comments? If so, you need to state your name and limit your comments to three minutes, please. All right, I see, I don't see anyone who is interested in speaking, so we could entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting. Nobody wants to go home?
I'll motion that we, that we adjourn the meeting.
I guess we already are home, huh? Okay, we have a.
Some of us prices it.
We have a motion from Commissioner Prince to adjourn our meeting.
I'll second it.
And, and a seconded from Commissioner Platt, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much, everyone.
Hey, have a good night.
Those of you who, those of you who are on the advisory committee, we have a meeting on Tuesday. Okay?
Is this a correct, is this a meeting?
The advisory committee meeting. If you're on that, if you're on that committee, you need to plan on attending.